You gotta slam the gavel.
You don't have to hit the gavel, as long as you call it an order.
No, you need to slam the gavel.
Roll call. Joanna Blanchard.
Here.
Jill Ickhorst.
Here.
Doug Jalina.
Here.
Lisa O'Connor.
Here.
Brian Page.
Yes.
Chris Redding.
Yes.
Chris Wile, yes. And Jack Bolet and Wayne Adams are absent. 3.4 is the majority vote. We'll stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. And there's no flag in the room.
Face the flag.
That one over that way.
The courtyard.
Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? This evening we have the presentations for the innovation schools. And from what Jeff tells me, we have a PowerPoint. And each of the schools is going to give us the presentation. And tonight is the presentation. It's not going to be a question or answer session. It'll give us time to digest. And at our next meeting, I think on Tuesday, we'll have that opportunity. So I guess we start with Design and Engineering Academy at John C. Page School.
So we have a table for you. And if you need an extra chair, feel free to bring up, you know, another chair. That'd be great. Other chairs, right? Perfect.
Sit at the committee lounge.
Yeah, you can sit over here too if you'd like.
Come on over here. So exciting.
You don't bite.
Well, I need others.
Just make yourself at home, Kristal.
Oh, sure. Okay, great. We're the hors d'oeuvres. That's what I wanted to know. We don't ever get those. All right, for May 6th, could we have hors d'oeuvres?
Okay, we'll put it on the agenda. So would you like to just introduce everybody on your team as a beginning point?
I'm good. Tonight, we will be presenting our Design and Engineering Academy Innovation School Plan for the Dr. John C. Page School. I'm Kristal Guskiewicz. I teach 3rd grade at Page School. Our planning committees include Dr. Mulqueen, members, Dr. Deborah Lay, our interim principal at Page, Chris Redding, our school committee member, Julie Grasha, our 2nd grade teacher, Hillary Seager, a teacher at Bagnell School, Patty Doggett, our reading specialist at Page, Martine Isabel, who is not here tonight, our association rep, and our wonderful parents, Charles Brankman, Barry Sands, and Eric Rich, who could not be here. We're just going to give you a brief history of our academy. We wrote our Design and Engineering prospectus in the fall. Upon receiving approval from the state and the $10,000 grant, we convened our planning committee. We met weekly. We brainstormed ideas. We used feedback from our trip to the Linden School Steam Academy in Malvin. And we created our Design and Engineering Plan. We reviewed the STEAM philosophy that was created by Georgette Yakman. And the STEAM philosophy, which is science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, dovetails very nicely with the district's goals and initiatives. We will share our brief PowerPoint highlighting the key components of our design and engineering plan. And we'll start with Mr. Page.
Thank you, Kristal. First slide outlines the vision and mission statements that we've worked on.
Now, we can do the Van Nuys thing.
If you have the copy in front of us while we're waiting.
Yeah, we have copy.
We have copy.
So briefly outline the vision and mission statements that we've established for the academy. The vision, this is where we are headed. This is our goal and our long-term plan. You'll see in front of us, the academy will result in accelerated learning for every student by implementing the STEAM framework for teaching and learning. Teachers will engage students in real-life problems as they integrate challenging standards, adaptive leadership, and high levels of personal meaning. This contemporary educational platform provides all students with the foundation to apply creative solutions locally and globally and recognize their unique role as meaningful contributors. So how do we get there? This is encompassed in our mission statement. This is where we are and where we will go in the next years. The School Systems Design and Engineering Academy's mission is to provide a rigorous and personalized academic program where all students can thrive. Through STEAM project-based learning, students will think critically about authentic, real-world problems and devise solutions by applying mathematical and scientific concepts. Students will take intellectual risks and engage in open-ended discussions, instruction. Adaptive leadership skills, such as collaboration and strategic thinking, will be integrated throughout the curriculum. Staff and students will share a unique opportunity to pursue their passion for learning and demonstrate leadership skills.
So the next slide. We identified the requested autonomies as part of this innovation school. They're composed of five curriculum. Staff will be trained in the STEAM framework in August of this year. The STEAM curriculum units will be developed in the year 2014 and '15. The schedule and calendar can be designed by the leadership team to provide opportunities for collaboration. The leadership team will also have the ability to control their budget, obviously within constraints of the budget themselves. The staffing, of course, will also participate in those staffing -- the leadership team will participate in those staffing decisions. And then finally, professional development for the Page leadership team will define its priorities for professional development and work collaboratively with the district to develop that schedule.
Benefits to students. Students will be engaged in high-interest, hands-on, meaningful projects. This connects to the district-determined measures and high-powered units that are already under development and, in some cases, in use in school. So we're building on some strengths that we've been working hard on. Teachers will be invigorated by the STEAM training, which we will all receive in the fall. And energized teachers make for enthusiastic students. The project-based learning will enhance students' experiences in all content areas. We're hoping to enhance engagement for all children through hands-on learning. Learning will be interesting, and it will also be fun. There'll also be opportunities for students, for some students, to experience failure when they test hypotheses that don't work and they have to regroup and have the resiliency to go back at something in another way. So that will be, we see that as a very good thing, too. Place-based learning will afford students the opportunity to explore the extended Page community. We already have a place-based early learning project in the district, in the school. The 6th grade has done a very extensive trail project, so we'll build on that. And the place-based piece will be increased for the younger students. So more connection with the larger West Newbury community and also the larger North Shore community.
So this was our big ending.
Full steam ahead.
Very good. So we want to thank you for giving us a snapshot of the work that you've done. And then in the next part, for each of our teams, anybody from the community who would like to come up to provide some feedback or some information for us, this is that opportunity for us to gather that. So is there anybody in the audience who'd like to contribute comments or has anything to say about the STEAM Academy, the Design and Engineering Academy at Page? Okay. Oh, there's a person. Could you identify yourself, please?
Maria Gray, small school grade teacher. I just wanted to share that our last faculty meeting at Bagnell was hosted by Hillary Seager and Pat Adams. And what they did was they put all of us teachers in the position of being a student. And they put some of that wonderful opportunity for us out there for us to do an activity to give us a little bit of a taste of what this actually would be like. We had to create something. We had to collaborate. We had to make conversation with partners that we were working with together and come up with a plan, talk about how to problem solve, and meet a challenge within a designated period of time. It was so incredible to watch everybody getting into this activity, which was not only meaningful and an opportunity for us to extend our thinking, but a ton of fun. And we were really grateful for the opportunity to have that experience as teachers because it certainly put us in a place where we can understand how it's going to be for these children, too. So I just thought I'd go after that, having had that chance myself to try it out.
Thank you very much. Okay, very good. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Who's next? Is it Bagno? Yes. Let's see that.
Hit it with this.
You know, not everything always works all the time.
There it is.
There we go. We have one.
Nice job.
It looks like I did, but I didn't. Just your presence, your aura.
All you had to do was touch it, right?
Nobody else from Merrimack could do it.
This is the Bagno team.
All right. So my name is Hillary Seager. I am a 4th grade teacher over at Bagnell. And I'd like to start by introducing members of our team. Dr. Mulqueen is a member. She's our applicant. Jack Bolet is our school committee member.
And is in California.
Is in California. Joining, yes, exactly, myself. We have two parents, Carrie Anderson Pequette. And there she is, right there. And Stephanie Lee.
Hi.
Very grateful for them for joining us. Kathy Bevalacqua, grade 1. Kristen Zanardi, grade 3. Joanne Queenen, grade 2. Jess Sousa, who's joining us. She's grade 4, is a special ed representative. Rhea Plummer, grade 5. And our principal, Lane Champion. So Bagnell came at this a little bit on a faster track than the Page School. I was a member of that and very enthusiastic about it. And when we decided that instead of doing a school within a school, that we were going to go the entire school as an innovation school, you know, I went back and we really very quickly brought this to the Bagnell School, pulled our team together. We were able to thankfully work from the Page plan, but we did tweak it to change some things for our own plan. And then very quickly got that back to be approved by the school committee. So we have a PowerPoint, too, which looks like ours is up there. We'd like to share that with you.
The vision is first. Our vision is very similar to Page, if not the same, but we'll go over it again. So the vision for the Design and Engineering Academy at Bagnell School will result in accelerated learning for every student by implementing a STEAM framework for teaching and learning. Teachers will engage students with real-life problems as they integrate challenging standards, adaptive leadership, and high levels of personal meaning. This educational platform will provide all students with a foundation to apply creative solutions locally and globally and to recognize their unique roles as meaningful contributors.
And I will share with you the mission statement. The mission of the Design and Engineering Academy at Bagnell is to provide a rigorous and personalized academic program where all students can thrive. Through STEAM project-based learning, students will think critically about authentic problems and devise solutions by applying mathematical and scientific concepts. Students will take intellectual risks and engage in open-ended instruction. Adaptive leadership skills, such as collaboration and strategic thinking, will be integrated throughout the curriculum. And staff and students will share a unique opportunity to pursue their passion for learning and demonstrate leadership skills.
And the requested autonomies are the same five. Now you've heard about those at Page School. The curriculum will be also following the STEAM framework, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. The schedule allows for flexibility for classroom teachers within their school day to work on open-ended projects with students that integrate the various content areas. Our budget, the leadership team will be helping decide how we allocate funds for target priorities. And the leadership team will also be involved, as will faculty, in giving input into staffing decisions. And then finally, professional development. We are fortunate that Jeff has been able to secure the guru of STEAM world, Georgette Yakman, to assist us. And we'll have her support before school starts and throughout the school year. And we'll also have professional development, which we've already started, thanks to Dr. Mulqueen with visual thinking strategies.
We anticipate students will benefit from STEAM-focused, project-based learning in many ways. Bagnell students will improve skills while making deeper connections between subjects. Students will think critically as they solve multifaceted problems, and they will become more proficient in their understanding and use of technology.
Increased student motivation will help facilitate independent learning, therefore increasing student commitment and perseverance through project-based learning and problem-solving. High levels of personal meaning will help students recognize relationships, coherence and connections to curriculum strands through project-based learning. Increased student motivation and independent learning will instill lifelong problem-solving skills. And increased proficiency with various methods of technology will assist the students in real-life problem-solving situations.
And I guess we weren't as creative as the Page School with, you know, full steam ahead.
You echo that sentiment, right? Okay, so just as with the previous group, if there's anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment or has a statement about the school over at Bagnell, this is the time to offer that to us.
Because I just have a question about, as a parent, I guess my questions would be, when referred to as an academy, when I first received that, it seemed like there would be an academy existing within the school, but it's going to encompass the whole school. And I'm getting the impression that it's a different, just a different approach to teaching and presenting the curriculum. And I guess what I would be seeking in the future is, and I'm assuming there'll be presentations or just to get a better picture of what the children's day-to-day experience, how this will be different, so.
That's right. So you're exactly right on all accounts. So initially, we were thinking about an academy in the district that would really draw from multiple schools in the district. And because the faculty gravitated so strongly to it, we actually went much further. So all of Page School and all of Bagnell has decided to adopt it as a strategy. It is a curriculum strategy that we're trying. And it's very highly aligned to the new thinking, not only in the state but nationally, about how to get kids to be more connected to their world locally and globally, how to make real-life problem-solving more about the curriculum than just going page by page in a book. And the last part that you represented is something that we'll be doing from this day forward, is to really bring it to the community to share with them the new thinking and the strategies that we'll be using with students. So this is like the very beginning of the work with the community.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, everybody from Bagnell. Great work. I've just done it.
They're all, isn't it? I don't bite. I probably don't.
Some people might have two.
I have two.
You have two?
Good. We all set? All right, well, great. Thanks for having us here tonight to give an opportunity to explain what's in the plan that you had for a little while now. Like the other schools, we'll start just by introducing parts of our team. Not the entire team could make it this evening. Go through just the highlights of the plan. And then, again, any input that we get from the audience will be helpful because we'll be able to use that to be able to design our information nights for people. So please don't be shy if you have questions or comments for the committee. First off, let me introduce people who are on the team. Sue Simmons, teacher. Noel Keach, teacher. Audrey Tar, teacher at the Donahue as well. Dawn Ackerman, educator at the Donahue. And Shannon Meehan, who is with us from the Bagnell School. She's here representing the PAT. We also had two parents work with us, Chris Skinner and Sharon Bartholomew, who couldn't be here. Lynette Prevenzal, another teacher from the Donahue School, is a member of our team. And of course, Dr. Mulqueen is on our team. And Wayne Adams is the school committee person. And I see Wayne is not able to make it this evening.
He's not able to come tonight.
As well. Well, when we first heard about the whole innovation school potential from Dr. Mulqueen, a number of teachers, actually, these teachers that you see in front of you here, you know, they have been asking this question for a while, you know, "How can we do better? We know we can do better. And here's an opportunity to do better by really doing different." And so the innovation school, we're hoping to be able to use these autonomies to create those structures, those, the environment for kids that we think will really bring that, bring what we can do to the next level. So our vision and mission. John's like way ahead. Way ahead. It's like working back.
It just barely went up.
Very similar to the two that you've already heard because, of course, they align very closely with where this entire district is going. Our overall vision, of course, is that our students will have an impact on their world. They're not just going to receive things here in school. They're going to do something with what they learn. The mission, how we're going to get there, well, our intention is to accelerate the learning for every student by implementing the International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program. This will provide the overarching structure for us to bring those opportunities to kids that we think will accelerate their learning forward and will give them the skills, will give them the attitudes, will give them the dispositions to know how to have an impact on the world and to be able to go ahead and do that. We did ask for several requested autonomies and...
Yep. Yeah, I think the first one would be the curriculum, just like, I think, is similar to the others. We are using the International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program curriculum framework. So that's, it's kind of like a basic framework that's centered around six transdisciplinary themes. There are who we are, where we are in place and time, how we express ourselves, how the world works, how we organize ourselves, and sharing the planet. So you would take the core standards and, you know, all of the essential learnings and concepts, and they're integrated into these transdisciplinary projects. And these themes go from pre-K all the way through 6th grade, so it aligns, the curriculum is aligned vertically as well. And they just do, it does a really nice job of integrating all of the learning of all the essential knowledge and skills, but as well as the conceptual understanding and developing those adaptive leadership skills. And also, they really try to get the kids to then take some action on what they've done. So that's how the curriculum is kind of organized with the IBPYP, is what we call it. The schedule is similar to what the other schools have said. The teachers will be deciding, like, kind of how the time is allocated. We may want to do more blocks to allow for that inquiry-based kind of learning. And these transdisciplinary projects is more project-based, authentic kinds of projects that they're working on. So we may have more scheduling changes, be flexible with having bigger blocks of times for the kids to get more deeply involved in what they're doing. And also, staff scheduling, we'll want to try to make more time available for staff to do some professional learning and collaborative work together to try to develop these units. The budget, what we're asking for is that the teacher leadership team will participate in determining how to allocate our funds for our school. The staffing, the teacher leadership team will also like to participate in the hiring process of all the, any positions that we have open up in our school. And our professional development is, we really want to take advantage of the resources that the IBPYP offers, which are many. They have workshops, online classes, they have curriculum resources, they have consultants that would help us out. And they also, we would have these, you know, form partnerships with, you know, schools worldwide that are IBPYP schools. So we would have these connections kind of globally as well. So most of our professional development, we would want to be using those resources that would be available to us.
The, you know, one of the big questions, of course, would be, well, what are the benefits for students then? And we listed out four primary benefits that we see come to kids. The first one would be something that Sue just touched on, but it's really to be able to provide the kids with a coherent curriculum. A curriculum that doesn't have the disjointed, sometimes confusing sequence that happens when teachers plan in isolation, when teams aren't, you know, really cohesive around. These are the common things that we want kids to develop, not just this year, but I know where they've been, I know where they're going, and it's really going pre-K through 6. So the coherence of the curriculum is one of the biggest benefits that we see for being able to provide the kids. And the coherence, not just using those transdisciplinary themes that Sue referenced, which, which in and of themselves give the kids a way to organize all this information and knowledge that they acquire and learn in an integrated way. You know, because most of what we use is integrated. You know, I don't use math just for math. I use math for solving some problems that have to do with me getting home tonight. Okay? So the nature of the curriculum just becomes much more coherent for the kids. And the curriculum also includes the adaptive leadership skills that this district is already very committed to helping kids develop. And again, how do these develop pre-K through 6 in a coherent, in a coherent way?
So again, under this umbrella of the International Baccalaureate Program, the students get engaged in things that have meaning to them, in projects and lessons that have meaning to them and in the world that they live in, whether it be the school community, the community outside the school, or through the connections that IB offers throughout the world. So as they learn things, they'll be actively participating in their, in their lessons, which hopefully will excite them and get them more interested in being learners. And as Rob said, and as the STEAM presentation said, they'll continue to learn those adaptive leadership skills and actually be using them, again, hopefully exciting them, making them understand that learning is a lifelong process. And that they'll take action in making a difference in their world in a small way or in a large way.
So then we have a climate of learning we're talking about that ties in with developing the students as learners. And it includes students being taught in ways that hopefully tap their creativity, spur their curiosity, provide an interesting learning environment to students. It really encourages them to be more independent thinkers, to want to learn, to want to ask questions and explore instead of just passively sitting back and receiving the teaching that we're doing. And this is also tied in with having the time as teachers to really do some collaborative planning that will provide a really rigorous learning environment for the students.
Which ties into the problem solving. Instead of a great deal of direct teaching...
Instead of a great deal of direct teaching, kind of the, you know, sit and get it, the students will be able to be absorbed into problems, and the problems might have global significance or local significance, and they can really dig deep into thinking and develop a lot of questions. The question, the questioning is the inquiry-based, and through those questions, they can research, learn more, and that brings up more questions, and it all goes towards answering their big umbrella question, and which might actually make a global or a local impact. That's what it's about.
There we have it.
Yeah.
Very good. So, you mentioned that it's international, and I think the origin is in Switzerland, is that right? So, will you be going to Switzerland a lot?
Absolutely. Does the budget kind of support that?
We have grants, right? Yeah. So, again, if anybody here in the community would like to make a statement about what we're calling the Merrimack School at Sweetser Donahue, this is the time to contribute.
Could I just get a little clarification? One of the things I hear from some parents is that they're a little bit confused about why two schools are doing one and one school's doing another. Is your vision long-term to pilot these and come up with a cohesive new curriculum approach, or are these going to be standalone as long as they're successful?
Well, the, the idea is to get to a certain outcome. So, you've heard very similar outcomes so far from three different schools. So, whether you're Design and Engineering at Page or Design and Engineering at Bagnall, even there, there are differences there too, or International Baccalaureate, what we're trying to do is, is to bring our students to become really connected to the local and global community and having an impact on those areas. We're already starting this work here in the district with our high-power units of instruction, and there are lots of examples that we can highlight about, for instance, students in grade one who are doing their math and language arts, but through a project that connects to the food pantry, local food pantry. Or, we could highlight, you know, another example in grade three where students are studying the effects of storms on barrier islands and wondering, you know, should barrier islands be rebuilt after storms? So, there are lots of different ways that we can approach things, and this just represents two different ways or three different ways of getting to the same endpoint with our students. So, there's no, like, hidden agenda to more follow these into one hybrid. We're hoping to really take the best that we can from everybody's good work. It doesn't mean, though, that everybody's working completely independently either. So, I'll give you an example of that. In the beginning of next year, we have some days of training already scheduled, and one of those days of training is around a program called VTS, Visual Thinking Strategies, and all of the, the elementary school teachers will be engaged in learning this new strategy for engaging students with art, as an example. So, there are things that we can share back and forth that maybe are not evident by the name, but are inherent in the strategies that will get us to where we're going. Does that help, Jen?
It doesn't. Can I have a just a quick follow-up? So, is it your long-term vision then that, I mean, could the public, parents anticipate that down the road you'll have more in the school? There's a reason why one selected one curriculum strategy and one school selected another. So, would we see more possibly, kids, parents saying, "My kid would be better at the IB, and I'd like to go over there"?
Well...
More like you see in a city, let's say, New York City, where they choose the schools they want to.
I think that would be something to consider for down the road, for right now, there, there's so much similarity between, in the work that we're doing at each school. I'm not sure that parents would be able to distinguish, you know, what their child is experiencing in one school compared to another.
And you're trying to get them to connect with their individual communities in a way.
That's right, exactly. So, you know, those questions, those are things we could consider in the future, but for right now, I'm thinking that, you know, we're going to be really well-served by these three different schools, taking a lot of leadership from teachers and moving ahead in ways that make a lot of sense, you know, and is, it's pretty cutting-edge, but not in a sense that we're, we're big risk-takers. It's where the whole educational system is moving, and we just happen to be on the front edge of that.
Patty Dillon, of Merrimack, and I wish my son or my daughters were still in the schools. It's very exciting. But what I just, going forward, I don't, you might have an example today, but it would be really useful to hear kind of an example of, you know, like, Dr. Mullqueen just gave some examples of another curriculum, but an example of, well, this is how we do something today, and this is how we might do it later, you know, in that program, because a lot of it just becomes, you know, kind of just like esoteric and like, okay.
Yeah. We have really strong connections right now to it because it's outside of our experience. And that's what I was saying before, that our parent work needs to continue from this day forward, so we'll be making those connections and trying to provide real examples of, of what it will look like, the different kind of work. You could actually go onto the district's website and, and click on to some of the Vimeo's that we have there to look at some of the work that's currently going on in the district. This is not disconnected from that. This is just going to strengthen our, our work. So, I understand what you're saying, but we'll be bringing those kinds of parent connections forward, you know, from this day on. Okay, well, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Everybody for Merrimack? Okay. Do we have Marcia in the Arts Academy? You're, you're next.
What do you want us?
Anywhere here is fine, yeah. We don't have a set structure.
And we not set seats. There's only three seats.
Well, you could pull a seat over to the edge if you wanted. There you go.
We're really pleased to be here tonight to talk about the Kentucky Arts Academy. The Planning Committee consisted of Dr. Mullqueen, Mr. Seymour, I'm going to do this.
I know, it's always hard because, like, suddenly you forget somebody's name.
But I hope I don't.
Right.
Shawn Dixby, colleague in the Arts Department. My name's Marcia Nato. I'm the department chair for the Fine and Performing Arts at the high school and middle school. I'm also the PAT rep for the committee. Cheryl Lee's a fellow art teacher at the high school. Irene Thomas teaches English in middle school. Also, Aris Moore is the art teacher at the middle school. We had Matt Smith, he's a guidance counselor at the high school, that was really helpful on the committee.
Jen Celeese?
Yep. Jen Leonard Celeese. And Susan Stasse, who is a parent and a community member.
And who served in the school committee capacity?
Jill Ikorst.
Jill Ikorst, all right.
Thank you, Dr. Mullqueen. It's helpful and more than it's worth. And that brings us to 11. And Denise Cardia Kreveling also came to many meetings and contributed a lot to our discussions. Okay. So, we'll start with the vision and mission. What's really exciting about these programs is that we, all students will have access to this Kentucky Arts Academy. Any student interested in the arts and wanting to explore further fine arts or digital and visual effects will have a lot of, a wide program of studies for them to choose from. They will have the opportunity to get early high school, early college, and early career pathway experience. So, we discussed and we are planning on a dynamic program of studies and to provide real-world experiences, and we will be using a lot of the contemporary teaching models that are out there. So, things like blended learning, which would just mean incorporating lots of technology, so dual enrollment, so students could take early college courses and receive credit. Just a couple of examples. Internships are another. Students will accumulate credits towards a certificate of achievement upon graduation. And right now, we have it designated as 25 credits. We feel like that's a good number to strive for, and with all the planning, if we see that it needs to be increased or decreased, we are asking for the flexibility. The mission is to integrate content standards, so that the frameworks that we are currently working under, and actually, the national frameworks and state frameworks in the arts are being revised and will be out this June, but I've had an early look at them, and we have a really great start, especially with this Innovation Academy. It addresses a lot of the new changes that they're implementing, such as community connections, adaptive leadership skills, 21st century skills, which you probably hear a lot about, and also personal meaning. So, those are the three areas that we're really, revolve around our mission. The outcomes, the capacity of the learner to solve real-world problems is going to be increased. Student achievement, if they're really happy about coming to school and excited about what they're learning from, about, they'll be able to transfer knowledge, and we just expect the student achievement to increase. And also, same with attendance and dropout rate. So, the same areas as the other academies, we're looking for flexibility in curriculum. So, we have a program of studies that we've included with our plan. We're going to integrate core content areas, and all that means is our classes beyond the arts, so history, English, psychology. We have a list of classes that would contribute to a student's learning in the arts, and also, an opportunity for them to delve deeper by making a proposal at the beginning of the semester and defending that thesis at the end. Contemporary learning models, which we discussed a little bit, the blending, blended learning, which incorporates a lot of technology, virtual courses, dual enrollment, internships, and service work. That's just a few of the ideas that the committee came up with while we were planning. And the students could potentially earn credit through those, through that work, like the service work or the internship. I think dual enrollment is pretty self-explanatory how you get credit, but some of these other opportunities are also just as powerful and enriching, so we will be, students could apply for credit for those. The school calendar and the schedule, we'd like to offer after-school and evening courses to students, vacation learning opportunities, and summer learning opportunities. Currently, the opportunities that we can offer students would be through local colleges and things like that, but it's not for credit. But we would like to be able to have the opportunity to reward the student. The budget, shared decision-making between the academy staff and the administration to support the student learning. And then staffing, we'd like the autonomy to be able to include industry professionals to work with students and teachers, to just bring, make sure that we're up to date and current in the industry. And then professional development, because it's such a specialized content area, we may need to be professionally developed in a different way.
In a different way, right.
Than the rest of school. So, the benefits are the early opportunity to explore in depth. I think that's probably the biggest, so I put that first, just an opportunity for students to explore an area that they think they're really interested in, and then actually fine-tune it to develop a pathway, or just to learn more about an area. Also, to receive early high school credit and early college, career opportunities for all students, just to better prepare them for after-graduation. Kentucky Arts Academy students will receive a certificate of achievement upon graduation, and we feel that engaged learners take ownership of their own learning, and connecting with the local and, local and global community empowers students to make a difference and a contribution in the world, so.
Okay, great. And in case anybody was wondering, Shawn actually offered a class this, this semester, he's offering one in last semester, in character sculpture, right, which was really successful. The kids did some great work, and one student actually won a local art contest over Newbury Court.
Yeah, the art association.
Yeah, that was really terrific. So, just with the other groups, if anybody has a comment that they'd like to make, this is the time to do it about our Arts Academy.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Seymour, I'm the principal here at the high school, and you're going to get to hear about two other academies, so there's three distinct academies at the high school. And we're really excited about the work we've done this year. We've been piloting some specific courses around that, as Jeff just mentioned. I thought maybe that would be an opportunity, maybe even just to give a little description Marcia just mentioned, some of the courses are really highly specialized and require specialized professional development. So, Marcia, maybe you can talk about the work that you and Shawn did in order to prepare for Shawn to teach the character sculpture class this year, just as a glimpse of some of the highly specialized things that we would be doing, and how we need to really work with industry professionals to get ready for that.
Sure. Shawn and I visited the Newman School in California at the end of June last year, and they had a week intensive course for high school students, and they offered five different workshops, one being a character design, character sculpture class. It was amazing to see what they were offering, and then, we also got to see digital sculpture. And just to envision it, because it's amazing, you just take the tablet and stylus, and you draw a circle, and then you start extruding, extruding, and pulling that circle in different directions, and you can actually turn that sculpture digitally on the screen, 3D. And digital sculpture is a class that you'll see in the plan as being offered next year. So, Shawn spent a lot of time in the character sculpture studio, but he saw all the other ones as well, but he spent a lot of time there, and that was the class that he piloted this year. And next year, we are going to offer digital sculpture, which is another class that we saw there. So, these, with software that the industry is using, so, and they're the, they're the premier school in this industry, so it was really helpful to see the environment, the software, and how the instructors were teaching high school students.
And just to add to that, the, obviously, the industries that we're talking about would be animation, special effects, and even gaming, so, I mean, there's, it's basically a foot in the door to any of these industries, and it kind of gives students the sense of, you know, what they could pursue with this, but also can apply to a lot of other, the fundamental courses that we teach here, so it's kind of, can expand.
Yeah.
I was wondering, you had early high school up there, and I'm assuming in middle school?
Yes.
And I have a student going into eighth grade next year, restructuring the day for the middle school.
Yep.
And it might be an opportunity for you to look at a, some kind of offering in the middle school in this arena? And I specifically bring it up because the restructuring of the curriculum there, if your student plays an instrument, there's a lot of offering in terms of they're getting to choose different options. If your student does not take an instrument, your option is STEM, which is great, but then you have general chorus or general music. Well, there are a lot of boys in particular, I can tell you that, and they're going to have to take general music or chorus. have to take general music or chorus. And I think some of the stuff you're talking about at some level might get them excited about this type of academy at the high school level, if you can infuse something a little bit fun for them as an elective in the middle school next year.
Well, music is fun. It's just not the kind.
No, it's all music, it's like music or nothing.
That's right. So you're exactly on the right track. So what you're seeing is, and what you'll hear too from the other academies is, over time, you're going to see this infusion into the middle school of the kinds of things that we can offer kids beyond the music curriculum. So music is a first attempt at expansion for what's offered to students at the middle school. You'll see the art program expand down to middle school, safety and public service, athletics and movement science, all of these will expand down so that kids will actually have early high school credit that they can earn before they even come to the high school. And that's in addition to accelerated math or accelerated language arts programming. So you'll see this over time. We have somewhat limited resources, like everybody, and so we have to do this as a phased-in approach rather than just like snapping your fingers and everything is there. So you're exactly right, we're on that pathway. And students who are seeing now what we're doing at the middle school or at the high school, particularly the older kids are wondering, well, what about us? Where were you when we were, you know, in ninth grade or like the new athletic facility? Well, what about us? Where were you, you know? So we're doing it as fast as we can and, you know, we'll try to meet everybody's needs, but you can see the work will gradually go down into the middle schools.
Well, if you could just put something else in middle school, like next year, that would be awesome.
All right, I got, I made a note, I made a note. So music and is what you're looking for, right?
Suzette Thronson from Groomland, I noticed there's several academies at the high school do, and you said that the students can choose, do they have to be part of one of these three academies? And if they aren't, then, because at the grade schools, I understand that it seems like an overall approach to curriculum.
Approach, yeah, right.
But how will it change for a student if they don't choose to go to an academy?
Well, just like now, you can choose to take an elective, you know, in a lot of different things. And so what we're offering to students is an opportunity to elect very deep experiences in some particular content areas. And so initially, you'd think, well, that's great, but if you can only take so many electives during the day, how could you ever get 25 credits? And that's what Marsha was talking about. We're trying to do 24/7 learning where students could elect to take something beyond the regular school day, they could do weekend work, vacation work, summer work, evening work, you know, they could be doing things way, way beyond the six and a half hour, you know, traditional day. So students will have lots of different experiences. Marsha talked about having a broader array of course offerings for students, and so they'll be able to go very deep into particular content areas that right now, you know, we don't have that luxury of doing.
And my second question is, if a student does choose an academy and does, how locked in are they if they've taken it for a year or two and then decide it's not?
So think about this, think about earning, so think about in, like in Boy Scouts, earning a certain number of badges to get to Eagle Scout or, that's the sort of academy work that we're doing here. So you're not locked into anything, you could earn certain credits that count toward a particular academy, and by the end of it, you've earned enough to be recognized for that academy. Does that make sense?
Oh, absolutely.
So you're not tracked through with a particular, like cohort of students or any of that sort of thing.
Okay, that was my question, I didn't know if this would take the place of what the teams are now or?
Not particularly.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
If I could jump back to the, your reference to pathways going forward, as a community member on the GZ Academy, the Art Academy, planning committee, one of the concerns I had, and the other community member as well, was that there's no art being offered currently, visual art at the degree.
Right.
Is that something that you're moving towards? I know it's not in the budget for next year.
But the year after, if you were to look at our plan, you'll see that next year, not, not the next school year, but the year after that, we would be moving things down into the middle school and you'll hear that not just from art, but from the other academies as well. So this year coming, starting in September, you'll see us begin to develop a little bit more here at the high school and then the following year, start to expand down.
That's just for the academy, that's not all eighth graders who are going to have an opportunity.
Well, any, so you'd have that elective, you'd have that opportunity. So anybody would be able to elect what that opportunity might be.
Even if they're not signed up for the academy.
Yeah, so again, it's not a matter of like becoming a member of the academy as much as electing a certain number of credits and earning those credits.
But just to push back a little bit, you want kids that are going to be committed to going towards this goal.
Well, you do, but in seventh and eighth grade, you want students to explore things that maybe they, they're not sure about yet. So I'd rather give students an opportunity, like in seventh and eighth grade, to explore an area in a deep way where they then know in high school they're, they want to commit to that in a particular way or not. Because, for instance, when I first got here, I met with students at elementary school, middle school and high school to get a, this is where all this work is actually coming from. And so in meeting with kids, particularly the younger students, you'll get students who say to you, I either want to be a marine biologist or a tap dancer. Like, the range is like this big. And so what you want to do is give them those opportunities to really explore all of those different kinds of things as much as you can. So when they come up to the high school, they're like, like, this is it for me, this is what really floats my boat. And then when they go to college, they even have a stronger idea of what they want to do. Like back in the day when I went to college, you explored when you went to college and it's too expensive to do that. So we want to give kids opportunities, rich opportunities, broader opportunities early on, so that they get to know who they are and can make decisions in a way that, like we couldn't, you know, when I was going to school.
So what I'm hearing you say is that within a year, all eighth graders are going to have an opportunity to take some visual arts.
More, more arts, yeah, more safety and public service, more athletics and movement science, so those kinds of things will be moving down into the middle school.
Thank you.
Yeah. Vote for the budget.
Well, maybe some work done to educate the students in the middle school about the academy, because I have an eighth grader and I found that some of the other private schools or even some of the public ones have done more infusion into the middle school to excite them about what's next, whereas they don't really know what they're going to get in their own high school.
Yeah.
So anything to help educate them on what's?
Yeah, we're already on that pathway. So Jonathan has done some really great work here at the high school to include kids coming up, kind of moving up and seeing what it's about and doing some great work with video and to show them what it's really about here at Penn Tucket. And these will just be added, you know, great benefits. So as students start to explore and in these particular ways and get a sense of what's waiting for them, you know, at the high school, some deeper experiences, that's exactly where we're headed. And this approach in the district is to really out-compete like all the private schools because we're offering things that they won't be offering. So we're particular, we're not competing with technical schools, we can't do that. So you won't hear anything about our innovation work competing directly with the things that they offer at Whittier, as an example. But we will be outpacing many of the private schools with our accelerated work and with these particular kinds of academies. And it's likely that there'll be other academies developed beyond these. So for instance, we already have interest from, you know, a local bank organization to come in and do a finance and banking academy with us. So they're interested in, in really promoting some of the business kinds of things that kids might be interested in. So this is the tip of the iceberg where we can offer kids a much broader experience, lots of real-life examples. Okay, well, thanks, Marsha and everybody, thanks for coming. Who is up next?
Movement Science.
Movement Science?
Yep.
Here he comes.
Pretty phenomenal. Used that in diesel, to the middle school, to kids here, if they get the education. It's good to do that, this happens a lot.
Yep, that's where we're headed.
Is that water we can offer this?
Yeah, would you like some?
I'm all set, but just stand up, if anybody wants to talk, I know it's hard, there is some water over there if you need something.
Would you like a water?
I'm good right now.
Okay.
But thank you.
My name's Dan Thornton, I'm assistant principal, athletic director here at Penn Tucket Regional High School. Kate Giassano is here, she's our athletic trainer, she's on our committee, as well as John McNamara, who's a parent, a member of our committee, your very own Lisa O'Connor across the way, Kim Kelly, she's a wellness help teacher, the teacher of high school, Amy Deacon, science department chair, as well as Jeff and Jonathan. They comprise Movement Science and Athletics Academy. So, not to be redundant, I don't want to take up everybody's time and go over a lot of this, of what Marsha talked about, especially at the high school, but I think what's really important for you guys to know is this is pretty darn cool.
It's way cool.
It's way cool.
And fun.
And fun. But there's a lot of really innovative stuff that's going on here right now. And I have the privilege even today, I was at a district meeting today with area schools in the Cape Van League, and one of the, it was an athletic directors' meeting. But one of the athletic directors, which we don't usually talk too much outside of sports, but the question was, what is going on with an innovation school? Which perked my ears, because, you know, getting back to what, the question that was just asked before about what's going on, what is known and what's not known outside of the school, you know, maybe a lot isn't really known about what's outside of the school right now, and this is really the tip of the iceberg, just even from where we're standing with, you know, Kate, and she's teaching a sports medicine course. But from where these courses can actually go is tremendous. And it's really, really good stuff that, you know, if I could use my own son, who is a freshman in college, and, you know, we're talking about how we're on the forefront of what's going on, and, you know, talking with him recently on the phone, he's saying, geez Dad, there was two things that I really would have liked to have had in high school, more science courses and some new athletic facilities. Well, you got it, Dan, but it's a year after you're going to talk. You're welcome. But we are Movement Science and Athletics. Kate and I and our committee, we've met pretty much every Tuesday for the last time being and we've put together a lot, a lot of different ideas going forward. And for us, it's really, really exciting. And, you know, just, just to get into mine a little bit with you, and you know, you may ask, what exactly is Movement Science? What is, you know, what do you guys do? There's three really main concentration areas that we have in Movement Science, and I've kind of broken it down to biomechanics, motor control and exercise physiology. So, I mean, it's basically, it's for students who are really interested in health, fitness, the human body and athletics. And Jeff mentioned, I'm sure a lot of you have heard this before, about what the interests were of students who are coming into the high school and then are leaving the high school, and what areas of concentration that they're really interested in. And this is how these innovation schools have started. And just from my study in this past year, in looking at college majors that are out there, this field alone with Movement Science and Kinesiology is exploding in terms of what students are looking to study outside once they leave high school. And I, I think the fact is, is, the number is a little bit under 50% is just the growth in this, this college career path alone. So as you can see, it's exploding, you know, and for us to be able to start to offer these kinds of classes at the high school level, what did you say?
What did I say, Dan?
It's really way cool.
It is way cool.
It's way cool. So we've started off here at the high school and it's the same, same with the other academies that you're going to hear about, which, you know, it's, all the students are going to have access, there's going to be 25 credits to get through Movement Science and Athletics Academy. It will be dipping down into the middle school areas. We have plans going forward for, for courses that will be, hopefully they'll be able to take in the, after next academic year. And, you know, I think that for us to be able to listen to the kids and students who have parents and talking about what they want their kids to take at high school, as well as what their interests are going to be once they leave the high school, and then to be able to implement that and have those courses that are offered here at the high school is going to be tremendous. So Kate Giassano is currently living innovation schools. So she, she started with us as our athletic trainer here at the school. This year, she's piloting and teaching a sports medicine course, which frankly has exploded. She's offered, she's teaching sports medicine right now, next year, we're going to be turning it into sports medicine one and sports medicine two course. Dave Evans will be up next, talking about his public safety course. These are new courses offered at the high school that are now seeing tremendous growth. And the word of mouth from these new classes that are being offered to the students is tremendous, because these kids are getting really, really excited about what they're doing, and with Sean Bixby and the awards that we've already received for a class that is in its infancy. So Kate can, can talk a little bit about her course right now, but, yeah, I think you should.
So I just wanted to explain a little bit about the introductory course that we're offering for sports medicine. We really wanted to just expose the students to career opportunities and then prepare them a little bit for that career that they may choose or may be more interested in because they're learning more about it. We've exposed them to explaining what the different careers are that are related to the Movement Science and Athletics, as well as giving them opportunities to shadow and then maybe observe different career paths that they do express interest in as well. So after school, a lot of them have been shadowing different professions and then kind of seeing what they do on a day-to-day workday. Careers that the students seem to be truly interested in right now are physical therapy, occupational therapy, athletic training, there are some kids interested in strength and conditioning, maybe personal training, coaching, as well as then sports marketing, sports management, things like that. Working mostly with an active population, we've kind of focused on how to prevent and take care of injuries, treat them, and then as well as rehabilitate different injuries that people see with an active population, not just people that are on a sports team or students here, but as well as active people, like their parents that go out for a walk after work or people that are just being active, not necessarily on a sport team. They've really had an opportunity to dive deeper into things that they have expressed interest in, which is really nice to see as well. And I am teaching a decent amount of seniors right now who are going to school for different careers related to this. I had one student that went to an accepted students' day a few weeks ago now, and she said she went to a couple of different college classes and the teachers were asking all the new students questions, and she was the only one that was able to answer some of the questions related to sports medicine, because we have this class and a lot of the other schools don't have it.
Because she went to Penn Tucket.
Yeah, because she was a Penn Tucket student, which was really awesome to hear, so.
Well, again, it's great stuff. And just to give you a look too, at how these courses are intertwined, and a lot of them in the different academies will be very, very specific to, to their academies. But you'll also have areas where, you know, we're looking to expand on the sciences. So for example, anatomy, you know, anatomy is going to be a great course for us to offer in Movement Science and Athletics, for obvious reasons. Anatomy is going to be a great course for Marsha to have in her academy. You know, with Sean, you know, when, you're talking about people who are sculpting, I mean, an anatomy course, you might not think that that's something that's going to be there. Anatomy is a perfect fit for that academy. So, you know, in terms of what is the golden ticket, or how are you going to get it in and out of a school, or is there a direct track that you have to take, it's really, there is no, it's not a direct track, it's not a direct ticket. I mean, these are different courses that we're already, in some instances, we already offered anatomy course here, but it'll give us a chance to expand on these courses and then to even tailor them to the various academies that are out there with some specific learning. So, I mean, and I'm- So, I mean, and I'm just looking at from ours, Biology and Anatomy with our sciences. In History, we can dip into Psychology. In Public Safety, is, you know, we can take an EMS courses. Wellness with this, exercise and nutrition. It, again, is the tip of the iceberg. We, we put together course lists of what we think we could offer, you know, over the next five years. We just stopped after two pages. Because there's just so many. It's, it really, really is the tip of the iceberg. This could go, you know, we could blow this whole thing up. And it's all being done right here. I mean, this, this is very, very exciting for us. I think all of us that are involved in an Innovation School in these different academies, you know, we're really excited about it. And for us to be excited about teaching it, we feed off of what we're already getting. I'm not even teaching a class, but I get psyched because I see Kate come back, and I see all the people involved in this, and it's great stuff. The kids are really excited about it, so.
It's nice to see the kids. It's nice to see the kids really interested.
Would you stay with us, Mr. Seymour?
I'll stay with you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm trying to keep up. I don't know where to go.
Roll the video.
Well, thanks for coming and explaining everything. That was great.
Are you done?
Are you done? Your time's up.
Well, I could talk for a while, but it's up to you guys.
You were just sort of kidding about roll the video, but I don't know if they're showing it in Groveland or West Newbury, but they've been showing it in Merrimack. Merrimack TV came out and spent an afternoon, I was sort of the host of this whole thing, and we sat down with Sean and interviewed him about the Character Sculpture Class and about the Arts Innovation Academy, and then we met with some of his students with their final product and interviewed them about what they did. Then we went down into the Athletic Trainer's Room with Kate, and we had a handful of her students there, and we talked with her about what the program's all about, and we had the students there talking about what they've been experiencing, and then the kids sat down and they taped each other's ankles and showed us a little bit of what they do. And then we went down and we grabbed Mr. Evans and some of the students in his Public Safety class, and again, kids were putting on their, you know, breathing apparatus and gear and talking about what they've been doing all throughout the school year. So, that video is out there. I should check to see whether or not Groveland or West Newbury have it, because it really gives a great, you know, tangible, like, kids talking about what they're doing, and actually in some cases showing you what they're doing, which is really pretty, pretty powerful stuff. And I would agree with Dan, I mean, I'm not teaching Sports Medicine, but I'm so excited about what's going on there. You start talking to kids and what they're doing, and then wait till Mr. Evans gets up here next, and like, it's just going to be unbelievable.
Will there be a helicopter?
Excited about what he's doing. It's great, it's good stuff.
It is. Anybody from the community have anything they'd like to contribute?
Hi, I'm Stephanie Lee from Groveland. I just want to say this is really exciting. If our kids are just half as excited as the teachers are, they're going to have a great experience, and it's really great to see the community better understand how the work that's happening at the elementary school level, better prepare students to be able to take full advantage of these academies and these career pathways. So, thank you for all the work you've had, and very quick time, you've really done a lot of great things.
Yeah, and, you know, this is all generated at the teacher level and at the administrator level, so like Rob and Dan and Dave and the faculty members, they're the ones who have generated all of this. So, this isn't one of those examples where like, we purchased something and then like, pushed it on to people. They're developing it from the ground up, and it's just really exciting. It's hard work, but you can hear the enthusiasm, you know, that the faculty has, and the kids have it too, you know? So, thanks for that comment. Okay, well, we'll look forward to more from Movement Science and Athletics.
There you go.
Thanks.
Station's on three.
Will there be a helicopter flying in?
No, no helicopters.
We get a badge?
Sticker.
No! Wow, this is great.
I do, now I have two.
Mine says Movement Science.
But that's good, because I have two.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dave Evans. I am one of the Assistant Principals here at the high school. On my left is Lisa Howard, one of our Guidance Counselors. On my right is Blaine Gogan, one of our physics teach, I'm sorry.
Chemistry.
Chemistry. And Forensics.
Forensics, right.
And we actually had a very large group of people that were part of our committee, even though we were supposed to have just 11, and I know that Jeff and John were both included on our committee, and Joanna from the School Board was also on our committee. We had a vast array of community people involved. We had Chief Holmes from West Newbury Police. We had Mike Dwyer, who is the Fire Chief in West Newbury, involved with it. Our parent was Don Kenefect from, from the town, from West Newbury, but is also our liaison to the Massachusetts State Police. J.C. Hona from Social Studies, Mike Stevens from Social Studies, the Chair from Social Studies. We had Sandy McCarron from Science as well. We had the Director of Guidance, Janice Hirschfeld as well. And also had a, had a student that popped in on occasion, the, the older Kenefect, Cassidy Kenefect, also gave us her, two cents every now and then. And again, it's, it's tough to go last, because you've heard everything that, that everybody has to offer you. And I've, I've had a lot of help also from Dan and from Marcia as well, as, as heading up the other two Innovation Schools as well. So, we, you'll see a lot of the same wording in some of the things we do, the Vision Statement and the Mission. So, I'm not going to beat you up with that. I mean, you can read it, it's in front of you. You can see the, that all of us here at the high school, I wish we could have brought some of the kids in as well. It has been invigorating for me as the, as the, I don't know, the de facto head of the Innovation School for Safety and Public Service. They have graciously allowed me to teach the Pilot School, the Pilot Class for Public Safety 1 this year, and it has been an amazing thing for me. But one of the words I always hear from the kids is the coolness factor. Not every school has Air 2, Air Wing 2 drop on their front lawn for the Mass State Police, or different special agents from the, the FBI drop in to say hello to kids. But really, it was a chance, this actually for me, a couple of years, this started a few years ago, sitting down to try to figure out what else is out there for the kids at Penntucket High School, or Penntucket School District. And I have a pretty decent background in Social Studies. I taught here for a while, and also in Administration, as some of you all obviously know. But I also have a pretty decent background in Public Safety. I'm one of the Lieutenants on the West Newbury Fire Department. I am a Safety Officer for the EMA for West Newbury. And I have, I didn't realize I had so many friends in high places in Public Safety until I started making some phone calls and trying to put this course together. You will see that we, we all want to do the same thing. We want to offer, you know, high-powered lessons for the kids all through, you know, K through 12. You're going to see us focus over the next five years, 7 through 12, with us, with Public Safety, and hopefully over the years, you'll see it trickle down. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, one person. Daniel Millard, who is a Social Studies Teacher at the Middle School, is also part of our committee as well, who is working with us, doing some activities already in Law and Constitution over there at the Middle School already. We've had some really cool things happen in the Public Safety class, and I'm sure some of you have, have heard, and it has trickled down. Next year, we have 118 kids already signed up for Public Safety 2. Of the 50 kids that I worked with this year, 38 that are returning have already signed up for Public Safety 2. If you go in my office and you look on my wall, I think I've said this to you people before, you will see the path of Public Safety, and through my mind and through my committee's eyes, all the little green dots and yellow stars and, you know, green clovers, whatever you want to call them. But they're all over my, my whiteboard. And the chance that you're going to, that we're going to have as faculty over the next few years to develop this and to carry it on, crossing over all the different, you know, the different disciplines. We've already done some talking with the Forensics Class and the Public Safety. We've talked about the Chemistry Class with Public Safety. I've had Ms. Howard come in and talk about someone who works in social work and therapy and counseling come in and talk with the kids. So, it's been, it's been a really, really nice experience for, for me especially, but I think if you talk to the kids too, you'll see that this, the direction that this whole project is going is, going in is based on what is best for those, that group of kids. They came to us and said, I really, really would like to investigate criminal justice, corrections, emergency medicine, fire science, how do I do that? And so, you know, having the, the okay to go forward with it and try to develop courses through the forensics and the anatomy and phys that Mr. Thornton talked about, you know, and even working with Kate in Sports Management, you know, with Sports Medicine, we actually have over 100 kids now certified in CPR and the use of the AED through the two courses. So, it's been, it's been fun for me, you can tell, you can, you can tell it's been fun for me, but I think it's been fun for the committee, I think it's been fun for the kids. I think they're going to learn the most important lessons in life, real, real world, what's relevant for them, and hopefully that it's going to point them into the careers that they choose. We also have the 25 credit for the, for the certification at the end of the, at the end of the graduation piece of it. We have the whole thing with blended learning, different, different virtual high school classes if we don't offer something, the dual enrollment with different colleges, you know, things like that. It's, it's been a pleasant surprise with some of the things that we've been able to do. Our hands haven't been tied, which is really, really nice for us. You know, it's, it's, and I know we're, we're off a little bit on our slideshow as well. But if you look at, you know, if you look at the first, actually the first photo of the service in Public Safety, the Public Safety Class this past, a month ago, we went to the, the State Police Crime Lab and the Fusion Center in Maynard, Mass. And that would be Mr. Kenefect in the front kneeling down, Mr. Gogan and myself, and the 25 kids that, that are in the class. And it is, it's those type of experiences that we're trying to give them. One of the questions that they asked in that, in that facility was, why do some people have guns and why, why do the other ones don't? And the answer that we, we received was, if you, if you see somebody without a weapon on, they are your scientists. They're the ones that are doing all the, the work with the CSI that you see on television, the chemistry stuff, the forensic stuff, the, the ballistics stuff. And then anybody with a, with a sidearm was a sworn protector of the state of Massachusetts and the United States. So, it piqued a lot of curiosity, a lot of interest. It, it is, you know, it is...
And it was, and it was nice, and like, for the students that were in forensics, they actually walked by and they could see the devices that do, after we've done some things with DNA, and they could actually see the devices, where it's all automated now, and they're going, oh, wow, you know, that's a lot easier.
Right.
So, but they get the foundation of where, how that, what, what those big machines are doing, so they're not just a big, big, not a beige box.
One of the things I ask the guest speakers to do when they come in and to the class is, tell the kids what, what is important in high school. Are there specific courses that they should be taking? Are there specific skills that, that somebody needs? And it was, it's amazing what they hear from these people. You know, don't get in trouble, be a good kid, do well in school, study. All the things that we, you know, we as parents and as educators, we want our kids to do, but they reinforce it, you know, tenfold with a lot of these people. And they talk about some of the classes that we already offer and how they would like to see it cross, you know, the cross-reference between the forensics and the public safety stuff, that type of stuff. It's, it's one of those things where it's, you know, I keep going back to the coolness factor. I hope it never wears off. I think the kids are still, you know, really, really interested, and the more we make it relevant for them, and the more that we, we show them that it's important, that the forensics that they're learning here is going to be really important for what they want to do when they get out of here. Or the English course, one of the big things was learn, make sure you learn how to write. That was another big thing. You know, and they went through all the different skills and all the different things that our students need to get ahead of somebody else. So, it's really, it's been, it's been a lot of fun. I can use the F-U-N word, it's been a lot of fun.
That's right.
And it's, and it's been an opportunity for them to kind of crystallize, well, you know, because a lot of kids have no idea what they want to do or how they're going about, go about doing it. So, this has given them a chance to kind of crystallize what, what they like, what they don't like, kind of, and, and kind of get, get advice on a pathway to bring themselves forward in this endeavor.
I think they've had a really special opportunity. And again, the whole idea was to try to get the community involved and try to get a lot of people from the outside in to work with our kids. And they've had a really special experience dealing with, like I said, criminal justice, local, state, federal. They've had a really good chance to talk to people in the medical field, EMTs, paramedics, you know, they've had people come in from fire science and tell the importance of the anatomy and the biology and all the things that you really should have. And they're amazed at the, the courses that are now being offered through the Innovation Schools, all of them.
And that's the huge thing, and Dave has been one responsible for that, of bringing these people in, setting these things up, putting these people in front of the kids. The people, you know, these people have all wanted to do this kind of thing. They wanted to come in and talk to students, you know, share their, share their knowledge with them, and Dave's made that possible.
Oh, I think it's everybody. And Dan made a good point in his presentation as well about somebody in the community coming up to him. Last night at the West Newbury Town Meeting, I had a couple of parents come up to me at the, at the very end, and it was a long meeting, those of you who went to West Newbury.
10:30.
And we had a chance to talk about all the different ones. You know, they wanted to tell me how, how their child sees, you know, how they see themselves in the big picture of the world, and then how do I fit them in? And having a chance to talk about some of the really great things we're doing, they're like, I'm coming tomorrow night, you know, or I'm going to come next Tuesday. And so, it was, it was, it was a nice conversation to have at a really late hour.
Anybody have anything they'd like to contribute? Yeah?
Oh, I'd like to applaud you all for the academy at the high school. I just think it's absolutely fabulous, the enthusiasm, and I really appreciate kind of the exposure that, to give some of the students, I just have my second one graduating from college, and, you know, they use college sometimes still to explore.
Sure.
So, I think it's fabulous. And the only other thing I would say, I would echo what was said a few minutes ago about really pitching this at the middle school. And I'm on the Finance Committee for Merrimack, and, you know, we're seeing, for example, next year, a major increase in our expanded, our expenses that are going to go to Whittier, because we are seeing this dramatic enrollment. Now, I know that you said you're not, you can't compete with Whittier, and, and, but I think that for some 7th and 8th graders, they hear the tangible offerings
Right.
that Whittier can bring them, and then they're kind of, they don't necessarily know, they don't hear this excitement of, wow, you can go visit the crime lab, you can do this. So, while you might not compete, you actually might compete with their minds and their, and, and bring them to the high school.
So, when I say I'm not competing, it means I'm not going to duplicate what they offer. So, my competition isn't offering somebody a better fit with what their interests might be. So, I'm not trying to dissuade anybody from going to Whittier for what they have, but I may have something that they don't that might be more attractive.
Right, well, that, that's what I'm just saying, to just bring it to the middle school so that they can hear some of this excitement, because I bet you some of those kids would say, wow, you know, there's some great stuff and I want to go to them.
Yes, exactly right, yeah.
We've had that conversation with our group too. And, and like I said, Daniel Millard, who's the Social Studies Teacher that was on our committee, is like, how do I help? You know, and so, he's, he's kind of our mouthpiece right now, and you're right, it makes total sense for us to talk with those kids.
And I don't think we are, you know, the, the, the things that are offered at Whittier are an endpoint. These are transitional, and, you know, so, so, you know, I'm a carpenter, you know, that's what you're going to get at Whittier for the most part. But with these, we expect students are going to go on and develop themselves further. That's, I think, part, that's a, a big part of the academy, is that, you know, instead of having a kid go to college and spend two years in liberal arts trying to figure out, gee, what am I going, what am I doing here? We're giving them some direction so that we cut down on that exploratory, expensive exploratory that goes on during, at, at the beginning of college career, you know?
Well, thanks very much for coming tonight. That's very helpful.
Thanks for having us.
Any final comments?
Yeah, I'd like to thank all of the people who have developed these Innovation Schools. I know it's been a ton of work, because we've been hearing about it for so long. And as a school committee, this is one of our first exposures to really getting some more information on it, and that's where we're at, and... more information on it, and that's where we're at, and it's pretty interesting, and we really appreciate all the work you've done, and thank you very much for it.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you.
Good to meet you.
Yeah.
What's that?
Second.
Jared?
Jared, yeah.
Aye, aye, aye.
Very good. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.